The topic for our second session is develop a vision for transforming in the next decade. Let's welcome our first speaker, Mr. Ida Bagus Ketuk Widearta, Assistant Professor at the Informatics Engineering Department in the University of Mataran at Indonesia. Currently, a PhD candidate at SNU with his topic, "Intrinsic and Extensive Reinforcement: Which One is Better and When Do They Work in an Online Environment?" I studied to support smart education. Let's welcome him with a big round of applause.
Okay. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry. I lost my voice yesterday. So, I'm sorry for my voice. Okay, today I'd like to present my part of my research with title "Intrinsic and Extensive Reinforcement: Which One is Better and When Do They Work in Online Learning Environment?" This study is critical when we make online learning strategy to improve online learning outcome. When we know when the intrinsic and extensive reinforcement work well, we can use this intrinsic and extensive reinforcement appropriately. This is the outline of my presentation. The first one is motivation or background. The second one is methodology, including model, variable, indicators, and data. And then we will talk about result, finding analysis, and conclusion. This is the background of our study. Based on regarding on Abolencia 2021 and Braga et al. 2017, education system education very important to improve social welfare of a country. But traditional system is vulnerable to being disrupted by catastrophic event like natural disaster, war, or pandemic as we faced in the last two years. So the traditional education system need to be improved. In other side, in Indonesia, only thirty-eight percent of high school alumni can be enrolled in university. This rate is lower than tertiary gross enrollment rate, which is forty percent. But if we compare it with Korea, Korea has ninety-eight percent in 2019. That's why it's not surprise if social welfare of Korean is higher than Indonesia. Based on these two problem, online learning improvement predict can improve the the resilience of education system and also can democratize higher education in Indonesia. But online education, online and learning improvement based on Diwali Pandey et al. and Chanel 2019 have many disadvantages such as communication lag, material issue, and motivation also. But Vera et al. 2019 said that motivation and reinforcement have positive relation with innovation. In line with this, Sang et al. and Sang et al. 2019 predict extensive and extensive reinforcement predict creatively. But there is no result about when this intrinsic and extensive motivation work well. To fill this gap, we did this study. The technology acceptance model is the most extensively used acceptance technology utilization model which use two technology acceptance measure is of use and usefulness. But we can add some variable to more consistent system utilization. In this case, we add three variable which is reward perceive of enjoyment and curiosity to measure effect of intrinsic and extensive reinforcement in the online learning environment. In this study, we also measured the influence of controlling variable gender and batch or level. Since the variable is difficult to to measure, we need indicator to measure them. Questionnaire represent the indicator. Indicator adopt related to course, material, and services provided by the lecturer which possible influence the student acceptance to use the online learning environment. This is our model. The TAM model is in this yellow box. It's content of perceive of usefulness and perceive is of use that influence a change of attitude and behavior intention. In this case, we add reward. It's a kind of extensive motivation suspected to influence student acceptance to use online environment. And perceive of enjoyment is a kind of intrinsic motivation suspected affect change student attitude and also behavior intention. Curiosity is one of human nature. This study measured the effect changing the attitude of student. Controlling variable gender and batch or level test the influence to attitude and behavior intention. In this study, we get data by online. We spread online survey. We use Google form, yeah, Google form. We we spread the questionnaire to get student opinion to prove hypothesis which was collected in November 2021 from Nantin University in Indonesia. There were five hundred and six respondent who gave their opinion in this survey. This questionnaire use the five Lincoln scale with a score of strongly agrees five, agrees four, undecided three, disagree two, and strongly disagree one. And was proceeded using smart PLS based on the model. From the data, democratic data is good enough. The gender and male and female is almost equal as well as the student level. The lower level have the the higher respondent. This is the result of the study. The process of the study, the analysis process, we use, first we have to test common method bias to avoid multi-colinearity and then reliability to test inconsistency in data and then validity. We use cross loading, internal record criteria, and HTMT in this validity test. After face all of this test, we can analyze the structure of the data. Table one and table two is the result of the analysis of structural model. In table one, we have two model. Model one is without the controlling variable and model two with controlling variable. But the result is dissimilar. Since the controlling variable is not all of controlling variable, it's not supported. The same, the model one and the model two is, the result is similar. But here we have two phenomenon. Perceive of enjoyment, which is intrinsic motivation. In this case, hypothesis six. If we check here, yeah. Sorry, hypothesis ten, yeah. If this then, it's influence to change attitude of student. But the perceive of enjoyment didn't didn't change the behavior intention. Yeah. So intrinsic motivation influence the attitude and also behavior intention directly indirectly here. Perceive of enjoyment change to behavior intention indirectly through attitude is positive and supported. But this variable not influence the behavior intention directly. In other side, reward which is extensive motivation, sorry, this one. Reward is extensive motivation. It's not change the attitude. Propan not change the attitude. But change behavior intention directly. Reward also didn't influence behavior intention indirectly. If we see reward, attitude, and behavior intention, it is not supported. Yeah. So that's the something new for me. Okay. We can analyze this again. Intrinsic motivation work from within a person so that the effect was not seeing instantly, but it took time to change attitude before finally taking action. This effect lasts for a long time because it arise from self-awareness. This kind of motivation proved to have a significant indirect influence on behavior intention as well as as well as seen double indirect influence. Extensive motivation or reward work in opposite direction. It work directly to affect behavior intention. It mean it directly trigger behavior intention and it make an instant effect on behavior intention. However, intrinsic extensive motivation does not influence the attitude directly and behavior intention indirectly through change the attitude. It signifies reward generate instant influence on behavior intention but cannot affect change the attitude. The controlling variable gender and seniority proven had no impact both on to attitude, change attitude, and behavior intention as well. This shows that gender equality was well established and there were no seniority issue. So in this case, the controlling variable was the least influence variable. This behavior was perhaps influenced by national culture of Indonesia, especially the low masculinity dimension. This is our conclusion. Concerning the result of data processing using partial least square regression algorithm, it showed that attitude influence to change in student behavior and intention and also satisfaction the most. However, attitude is influenced by many factor including perceive of usefulness, perceive is of use, curiosity, and perceive of enjoyment, all of which significantly affect the behavior intention of student in Indonesia. Intrinsic motivation is proven to have a strong influence on changing the student attitude and also has a strong indirect effect on changing behavior intention. So intrinsic motivation which is shown enjoyment has a direct influence on student attitude and an indirect effect on behavior intention. But it has proven no significant effect directly to behavior intention. Reward that all believe to be able to change attitude and also behavior intention, apparently in this case, only have an instant effect on behavior intention, but do not foster attitude change and even have no indirect effect on behavior intention. Gender, gender, and seniority is in this study is are not proven to affect both a change to attitude and behavior intention. I think that all. Jepa Balpural Drojisoso.
Now, our next speaker, Mr. Deshomi Wadoho, General Director of the Ministry of Education of Ethiopia. Currently PhD candidate at Kais with his topic, "Academic Knowledge Sharing Behavior Via Social Media: Using an Integrated Social Psychology Model to Understand Undergraduate Students' Perspective." Let's welcome him with a big round of applause.
Good morning. Thank you for introduction. Because of interest of time, I have to focus on my presentation. As you can see, the topic is a part of the entire dissertation I am working on on academic knowledge sharing via social media using two big theories. They are UTAT and the integrated model of TAM and Theory of Plan Behavior. So the second one is focusing on academic knowledge sharing behavior. The outline is this one. Maybe why people share knowledge? People share knowledge if satisfy their needs. It depends on the need hierarchy of needs. This is basically guided by their sharing behavior. And this sharing behavior is both cognitive and behavioral and is defined as a set of individual behavior involving sharing of work-related knowledge and expertise. So we must examine the knowledge sharing individually because individuals are at the core of this process. This process is a complementary action, complementing, not supplementing. When we share, we complement each other. Then, when we see the online sharing, this online studies on online sharing of employees shows two contradictory contradictory results. On one hand, online sharing has significant importance on organization, but from individual perspective, individuals are not, they are fear of losing some power if they share. So what results of the study suggests that to secure for farmers to use this intangible resource that the knowledge of their employees, they have to prepare a strategy. To prepare that strategy, they have to know what are the motivation behind for using that technology and the motivation behind using, sharing the knowledge. So based on this, they can prepare a strategy that can pursue to use the employees' knowledge by sharing in the organization. The same study for the students shows that knowledge sharing among students facilitate learning because it's complement what they get from their lecturer and from the surrounding and certainly from classmates. But on the other hand, the study in Singapore particularly show that a student, they have fear of their peers may surprise them because of competition in the academics. So this needs study, not yet studied in this area as to our knowledge in the database, all database we assess, it's not studied. So this is why important. So the other thing is that academic knowledge sharing via social media has two perspective or two aspects. One is technological aspect and the other is behavioral aspect. Why they use, what motivates to use the technology and why they share knowledge? So these days, higher learning institutes can improve their group learning by incorporating digital platform that allow student to communicate more efficiently and removing temporal and physical barriers to share their knowledge. This is the import, the contribution of ICT to revolutionize learning process, particularly in the higher education. So as a tool of knowledge sharing and communication, social media reduces these barriers and speed up knowledge sharing at organizational and individual levels. One might consider a new flexible communication platform. So through this social media, web two technologies, social media allows users to create and share user-generated contents, particularly mostly used in engineering and technology equation. As a result, student can improve their communication and enhance the effectiveness and efficiency of their knowledge sharing through the proper use of this social media platform. So what is social media? It is defined. I think it is important to see what social media. I'm not, in this study, we are not looking into specific social media platform in general. That is one of the limitation we have here, which the other study will, the next study will consider. And that is social media as internet-based application that build on ideologies and technologies foundation of web two that allows users to share information and knowledge. So the important characteristics are this one. I don't know whether one is no boundaries. Friendliness, free user content, multi-directional group thinking. All these gifts for education according to this author to use social media for educational purpose. Let give you some background on what looks like the utilization. Particularly, I'm focusing on the study area that Ethiopian case and Eastern African case. We can see from this graph. In Ethiopian case, as a user, the people who is using the or active social media user is increasing from time to time, but it goes up and down. It's a reason studied already. But if you see in general, social media penetration rate in the world, the globe is around fifty-eight percent. But East Africa is ten percent. Ethiopian is five point three percent. That gives us some hint background. What about the experience around that make pressure for people? So we raise a question. What are the factors influence undergraduate student academic knowledge sharing behavior using this platform? The other is because our study is based on the topic, is based on existing theory. So we raise another question. Are other factors than existing in the existing theory? So we use design, a quantitative method, a cross-sectional survey to address the concern of the relationship between the variables. And we collect data at one point using this cross-sectional survey method. So what is the theoretical framework we use is that to address the use of ICT, different approach or models are developed. The previous study already present on TAM. But there is an argument. TAM cannot fully show the adoption of technology according to one catch and others. So we prefer to use the integrated model more to understand this integrated model of TAM and Theory of Plan Behavior which we extended with additional four variables which is related to this. So our model drawing gives us such a map. With based on this, we try to review related studies and we summarize. Particularly the guy from Vietnam, which is a recent, two thousand nineteen, which is really for me is a foundation. And he himself also recommend to replicate this more integrated model in other industry, in other country. It's me, I hope, second to him to duplicate. It's this integration model in the online learning sharing behavior. And then the rest also, but no directly, no study directly done or undertake on knowledge sharing behavior via social media using this approach. So our research uses TAM and Theory of Plan Behavior focusing on academic knowledge sharing intention, academic knowledge contribution, academic knowledge seeking as a main predictor of the actual behavior of sharing. As knowledge seeker accept knowledge given by a knowledge contributor is used or reused and the cycle of the sharing will be completed. So the other thing is what we had is that first time and according to our knowledge on the database, trust is very important predictor of academic knowledge sharing intention because online people who Because online, people who share online, they do not uh each other. So there is, there is a thing that behind a risky process. So there should be a trust. So trust is uh taken as an additional variable. So uh this variable uh we included in this study. So we uh develop these hypotheses, I think you can, it is uh visible. Then uh this relationship in this model, you can see there are four mediators, perceived usefulness, knowledge sharing intention, knowledge contribution and knowledge seeking as a mediator of uh relation between the variables um connected with. So we develop a measurement uh development, the items we develop. And then we collect data from Ethiopia, uh from four universities. Um this is a characteristic of a respondent. The all metrics of the measurement model uh gives us a good result. Uh that is average various extract uh to measure convergent validity, uh Kornbach Alpha and composite reliability for internal consistency. And his construct convergent validity is um uh maintained. Measurement model evaluation discriminability because of the uh criteria and the uh T uh is maintained. The structural model analysis shows only one hypothesis is rejected, the rest is um supported both the mediators and and the model predicting explanatory power, uh also um the moderate, the the um medium and the predictive relevance is also very good. And the discussion and conclusion, I will, I'll, I'll, I'll go to the final point. Um uh theoretical contribution from this theory, this study, trust is a knowledge sharing uh trust in knowledge sharing significantly influence knowledge sharing intention via social media according to this finding and also uh inconsistent with existing uh study. Uh knowledge contributing and seeking behavior um significantly influence academic knowledge sharing behavior and mediators between knowledge um sharing intention and academic knowledge via social media. And perceived usefulness of social media is very uh important mediator uh between attitude and ease of use and intention also. So all these are the references. Ronnie is prioritizing me. I don't know. I I I feel that I use, I didn't use my time. I'm sorry. Uh anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tashome. Uh now let's introduce our next speaker, Mr. Ayewen Agus Arimbawa, Assistant Professor at University of Maratang in Indonesia, currently a PhD candidate at ISNU. With his topic, Unram SNU Shaqin Sustainability Center Forecast Sustainability Socio-Technical Transition for Social Contributions. Let's welcome him with a big round of applause. And I I would like also to remind our presenters that your time is fifteen minutes. Please keep your time.
Yeah, thank you. Um uh good morning, everyone. It's always been uh a hun, an honor to be here um in front of our colleges, our professors. Um yeah, this time, uh this is not a piece of my research, but in a part of uh but my research is a part of this one. So uh it's a kind of playground for me. Uh we ha, uh I have my research on regional innovation ecosystems and also national innovation ecosystems uh through the patent datas and especially focusing on the uh the involvement of the university uh in a, in a early stage of uh national development. Because uh we know that university uh in a, in a early stage of innovation uh innovation uh national innovation development is very important. We have our case in in um in Korea that during the seventies um uh the policy also enhancing universities to uh to gain more knowledge. And finally, we are here uh in in the most innovative country in the words. Um I'm very lucky to have this uh uh Samic. Samic is a uh a corporate corporations, corporations, it's a company, uh Korean company that's operating in Indonesia now. So uh they uh has given us some funding to estab, establish our uh center. So the center is focusing on um to foster um to foster us of sustainable socio-technical transitions for our social contributions. What is it? And how we uh we will achieve that? Um this is uh what I about to present. Okay, let's skip this one. Um the first part where I want to start is about innovation. What innovation that we know today is about uh how to make a product, a new product, a new uh more valuable products than before, um something like that. When beyond that, innovations should uh like uh to reach uh the market. How how the product will sustain in the markets and how people use the product is also very important. Especially in our case, like in a developing country, uh not everyone can buy the products. So uh in this case, uh our social conditions is also uh what technology that suits to fit that our requirement is very necessary. So um this is the gap a little bit also um as some kind of advancement, a frontier to do this socio-technical systems um in the parts of developing country. Uh so we started with the uh a full evolutionary economy. What is, why is it matter? Why uh why it is matter? What is different between traditional economics and evolutionary economics? That uh traditional economic will uh talking about the uh labor and capitals and technology in the, in the national scales. Uh but evolutionary economist talking about that those needed of innovation should start from a bottom up. Yeah, so um this is the best way to approach uh to uh to enhance the capabilities of university because they are, their, their excellences is in the uh regional sector, the in original uh the in this regional or their surrounding geographics. So they have specialties uh in the eastern part of Indonesia and southern western part of Indonesia. Uh they have their own, uh their own excellences. So this is, this will, this, this type of approach will um enhance our capability to do innovation. Yeah, from innovation from uh a evolutionary perspectives is not just uh it's concerning about the evolutions of institutions and organization to and uh and the more things about this is about networking and connection. So um yeah, like innovation centers, like techno parks and how they are connected to each other and different actors in the innovation ecosystems is also very important. So what are the innovation means to uh the SME or the corporations is about to uh yeah, they say that the company said that innovation will aspire, um make uh make uh like uh to choose and it can be able to choose in a different uh way to discover more values and evolves and uh etc. So uh we need to do something uh like that, but also in a part of that to enhance more, we need this socio-techno, technical system transitions that is not only, yeah, talking about the uh how to make another product, but also how to diffuse them to the society. So this is very important, not only the technical things, but also the social things, it's also the economics things. Um we are now um in a pace of uh fourth industrial revolution. So um this will enable more and more uh how to uh how to diffuse technology closer and closer to the society because um from the first evolutionary evolutions of industrial uh to the fourth one is the technology is getting closer to coast, closer and closer to uh and person, personalize the uh the people. Yeah, so also uh this will uh make us have a huge opportunities to uh reach the, reach the people in the bottom line. In that regard, so now we have our Unram S Cube Center. S Cube mean S tree is as for stands for Seoul National University Samic Sustainability Center. So this center is uh want to achieve the social uh sustainable social development. Our tagline is technology for social activism. Our visions is uh to make an effective social contributions and also uh sustainable social development. Uh the the goals is one, we need to, we wants to achieve that something that are really real practicals. And the other one is one, we want to develop the model for the new uh technical, uh socio-technical systems for social contributions. So we have uh this, those like uh those partners from uh SNU and also GRCs and also parts of our government. Uh our program is uh the like capacity building, entrepreneur saves, uh enhancing innovation ecosystem and also uh supporting for a startup, uh IT-related startup. This is our group board of the member. Um yeah, we will skip this one. Um the uh the uh the theories that uh we used to approach this one. Yeah, this one is not just only the project, but also uh we use some uh kind of research and theories behind. We use socio-technical system for theories, triple helix series and entrepreneurial universities theories. What we do for this start, uh starting up our activities uh to, to make uh this uh center? So uh now uh we are ongoing to uh realize this uh center. So uh the center will be the place for uh sharing, to create and to, and also chill, chilling like uh to share with uh we, we will have some meeting rooms and the place for uh some people together and share their ideas and create soon zones will be uh some kinds of labs and with um a very interactive uh spaces to make some things like makes drones, makes robotics, makes IOTs and makes um like systems or some things like that. And uh we have also a chilling zone, zone. Our program is uh giving a direct impact, giving the direct impacts and also building the the frameworks. And yeah, this is uh the program that's already started uh from Seoul National University. They uh they have uh send it, dispatch some of the students. Um we want to have a regular for every semester so that together with um our students and at Mataram Universities and SNU students, they can collaborate each other and uh learn how to be uh international citizens and creates a professional uh kind of informant uh to um to proceed their, their projects or their programs. And we also uh conducting training now, uh we have computer trainings and also lineage trainings to uh promote Korean uh culture, Korean uh lineage and culture to um to our students and also to the communities uh around our place. Um but the main parts of our program is about to uh giving the technological solution for socio-economics problem. Yeah, uh this is um what we uh what we want to have, like from this program is uh we need to um yeah, like every annually, we we will uh like create and uh implement it uh like on my, our target is ninety ninety of product solutions for the communities, like for social communities. For example, uh this one, uh we, we used it for uh, we, we used a uh IOT-based technology to uh to help farmer in a dry area. So uh some part of our place is dry, uh in the back of the mountains, mostly dry. So uh we put a drip watering systems for the plants, it's helped uh the and also we used, uh we gathered the data and sent to our server and analyze the data uh to make a better of farming solutions. Uh this part also, we use drones to uh drones to deliver products to one island, to the other, to the other islands. We also expecting a patent from that. And uh to enhance regional innovation ecosystem, we use a triple helix and to approach the uh governments. And uh for annual target, we need to have like fifty young entrepreneurs. And uh this is our plan for next year. And uh we have also a lot of challenges that we can uh share. Uh okay, uh this is uh all the dream up and come some of that. Thank you very much.
Now, our next presenter, Mr. Roger Joseph Royo-Rasgson, Ex-Secretary General at the Spain Chamber of Commerce in Korea. Currently a PhD candidate at KIC with his topic Corporate Venture Capital and ESG Management. Let's welcome him with a big round of applause.
Thank you very much. Actually, I will pick up the glove here with innovation. And I'm gonna start my presentation talking about corporate venture capital and ESG management. And thank you also for the organizers, for I TTP and ITPP for everything. And let's just start. Then the first thing, and I like the definitions we got before. So we have several definitions about innovation that we can use here, like innovation, like parts that can refer for something new or change made to an existing product or deal, field, the result of introduction of improvement. So all those definitions lead us for also some questions like enterprises that do not innovate ages and declines and experience rapid changes such as the present, the decline will be fast. It means with no innovation, companies will fail in the near future. So this is coming from Peter Rocker, one of the most famous American Austrian consultants that he has even like a, a school. Then another definition or another aspect that we need to understand here, like with fast ideas come faster innovation. Sixty of Apple's revenue come from products that didn't exist four years ago. So it means companies that do not innovate basically fail in the near future. But then, once we talk about innovation, then we see that, okay, uh according to McKinsey to Marketer, he say it's difficult for well-established companies, corporates uh to innovate. So by and large, they are better executors than innovators. It means innovation basically comes from small companies or startups. But then if we say innovation come from a small companies means all corporates are dying, it is one of the questions we need to ask. Absolutely, I'm sure you have already some ideas and some answer for that. But then we can think is Apple dying, is Alphabet dying, is Google dying? So those questions, I'm trying to reach a answer for them. And absolutely, I think it's something that matters. Then when we see Alphabet and we see the data that they are, I mean the how Google is doing, we see, okay, they are corporates, they are executing their business plans, they have ads, actually, the most of the revenue stream comes from ads and other products. But then we see they have a lot of organizations. Here you see like Google Venture Capital, Google Capital G, Barry Lee, all those are what we call corporate venture capitalists. So they are part of Google, but they are not executing, but finding other business opportunities on startups, investing on them and so on them. And sometimes merging, acquiring or finding technology. So then that's just an example, just wanted to show you Google Ventures, like has over eighty billion in assets under management and four hundred active portfolio companies across North America, Europe. I'm sure if you are in Korea, you also know there is a a Google uh the startup hub. So this is something that matters and that's cool. That's why Google is focusing on that field a lot. So you can see four hundred sixty-five and all those companies are divided in different sectors like artificial intelligence, e-commerce, cybersecurity, fintech, life science, enterprise and others. It means they are investing in all type of industries. So that kind of like help us to understand how important is venture capitalist or corporate venture capitalist. And it's different than the independent venture capital that we know that is more, it's not attached to corporations, but it's it works independently for corporate ventures. They they try to connect this innovation aspect that was that was playing before with corporates that are running happening. And as you can see, this is, I'm going, I'm explaining a little bit the background of corporate venture capital and how important they are. They invested fifty-three billion and performed two thousand seven hundred forty deals in two thousand eighteen. That's, for example, one of the data I I found. And they invest in many type of companies and normally they have this what we call the win-win if effect that it's not just good for the startups because they can go through all the stages, they can grow up, they can scale up and that needs money. So that money come from corporates. But as we explained before, it's good for corporates where they can get innovative solutions, they can always be aware for new technologies, disruptive technologies, radical innovation, right, like disruptive innovation, all those aspects that I did not explain today, but it's, they are very important. So they get access to new ideas, future strategic options. But also we know that there are some disadvantages. So in my research and this research, in our research, we will try to find what is the performance of those for those investments. Here you have other things, performance implications, and those are mixed, mixed with benefits and some drawbacks. So not everything is perfect. And that's when we know there is risk and all investments have risk. Then we will and try to understand or how we can understand, how can we analyze the performance of those investments? So indeed, we have here three different ways to understand the performance, to measure the performance, which is sometimes important. We need data, not just like feelings. So there is the one, one side, we have what we call the corporate financial performance. And you can imagine that is more related on how they perform when it comes to returns. So how they get money from all the all those investments. Then we have a corporate strategic performance that is actually same as important as as the as the financial performance because it just, it gets a competitive advantage. It's something you cannot measure with numbers, but it's still very important for corporates if they want to position themselves. So they are related to their market and competitiveness and so on. But then we have, we have another way to measure if the investment is good or not, knowing or seeing how those ventures, how those startups that have been invested. So it's invest, invest, invested and investee, right? So corporate is the bestie, venture is the invested. So measuring how the invested companies or startups perform is also interesting because if we know they are invested by corporate, maybe we can think, do they have higher life and or do have a better exits? Like, do they have higher number of exits or higher number of mergers or higher acquisitions? So as you can see, there are a lot, and I'm not the first, the first researcher that tried to answer those questions. So this is not something it's it it came just from me. I studied different outcome measurements, starting with investor mergers, so corporate strategic, market power, investor alliance, explorative learning, tech productivity, even R and D input. So those things can be measured from the strategic point of view, that is not directly related with the financial perspective. Then we find the fi- the corporate financial performance, which is more about investment success, revenues and profitability, that I'm sure you already thought. Cash flow, if that generates cash flow or not, the liquidity, the like Tobin's queue, the growth potential, higher air. And then venture performance related to patents, tech novelty, tech alliances, uh tech alliances, like IPOs, acquisitions, survival rates, revenues and so on. All those things can be measured and I'm trying to do that. But then, once you study the research, you find some contradictory issues. So there's some ambiguity here. Like despite there are a lot of empirical research, it's difficult to understand if, I mean, sometimes it gives one uh results on all the others. Sometimes it depends where you read, you find more advantages or others, some more disadvantages. There's also some metaginity, like too many things happening, so you don't know which one is more important. Interdependence. So it's like those of the data that you get is uh has interdependence and so it's difficult to study independently. And some missing components that I will highlight a little bit here that are we are missing some data that is relevant nowadays. And since we don't have a lot of time, I will go fast on that because it's very important. It is part of my my topic. So why ERG are important? And then we talk about ERG, environmental sustainability and governance. We may think, okay, that's why it's a startups, right? We see the shift from shareholders from this perspective that comes from Milton Friedman, where the most important is the benefit you give for your investors, for your shareholders to stakeholders, where it's not just about profit, but meeting like various needs of the stakeholders, which would be like making the world better, more sustainable and having a better impact. Here I will, those are the factors that you can study on ESG. Why this is important and why become, it it has been not just a trend, but it's it's here to stay where ESG considerations have been studied, not just for companies that invest, governments that make regulations and so on. Uh, those, those are the impacts, for example, starting with the United Nations, United States, Europe and so on, that are creating those ESG scores, ESG uh I kind of a data try to understand if a corporates are or not implementing. So again, published guidance at the end is making the company accountable for what they do, like the accountability is what is important for ESG and not just making profit for the shareholders. When it comes to entrepreneurship, we see that there are many like um strategic um positions from startups where they are going to get more or less investment depending of ESG. We see many examples where like companies have this greenwashing where they present themselves a very sustainable on, but we are trying to measure in this research if this is relevant or not, and if that is impacting the performance for corporate venture capitalist investments. So I would, since we just have three minutes, my question here is, is G scores have a moderating effect on CVC performance, like corporate venture capitalist performance? So that's a question I'm trying to answer through that. So we will stay with the three areas of performance that we just mentioned before, that corporate strategic performance, corporate finance performance and venture venture performance. But then we will ask, do we have any moderating effect here? So in those in my, in our research, we are, we are gonna try to answer those questions. So are CBC investment positively related to corporate? To corporate strategic, corporate financial? And do ESG scores play a moderate effect or not? Those are questions that are very as you can see, this is a conceptual model. We will use different data from like from all these three aspects of performance and try to analyze if it has or not moderating effect, positive or negative effect. So since Ron is here to give pressure to all, that's the hypothesis that we have proposed data collection and methods, and that would be the says that I will go through, reference list. And thank you very much. Gamsamida, muchas gracias.
Now, let's call our final speaker from this session morning, Ms. Nancy Ho Loria, professional in informatics and systems developer at the National Learning Institute in Costa Rica. A master graduate at SNU with her topic living labs to increase Costa Rica innovation. Let's welcome her again with a big round of applause.
Good morning, gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Nancy. Nice to meet you all. I am very glad to be in this big event from SNU. Uh, in my case, um my research was related to the living lab as a solution to increase the innovation of Costa Rica. Okay, as a background, uh our country had been increasing our innovation in this year. So uh according to the uh International Index, Costa Rica had been in all Latin America in the third partition, in the third partition related to the innovation increasing. Uh part of that background is related to our government had been working in order in create more strategies to increase the innovation in our country and through the competitiveness and productivity. Also, uh in related to the problems that I have found related to the increasing of the innovation in our country is related to the technical um adventures, right? Uh, the second one is also is related to the implications related to the culture and to the process between how we can combine or make work together three different sectors, public, private, and even for citizens to work together to increase the innovation. And related to in the other program is related to the all the information that we can pass through uh uh relating to the innovation. And the final one and the most important is uh that collaboration. That is one of the biggest problems that we have facing related to increase more our innovation. And why the living labs? In my case, I have been researched and this topic was very important because the living lab is like a tool that can be useful for increase our innovation. Why? Because we can affront in one place uh all the relationship within the private and public sector and even integrate that community. The research motivation that I have is related to identify the project that we have for or in the performance that we have for the living labs in our country. And even the most important is the is the benefit that they have and also the barrier they're facing right now in the living labs in my country. Uh, relating to the research problem is related to, like I mentioned before, about the public and private sector partnership and also for the innovation requires that a collaboration between this, that in the institution, government and private institutions. The main objective of this research was related to the uh to the to the living labs to implement and the sustainability they have. And also, we use one methodology related to the TOE is related to analyze the technical and the organization organizational and external factors they are affecting the barriers they are facing the living labs in Costa Rica. Uh, the research novelty related to that is how to use the previous research and apply it in one specific country. So even to connect these barriers with the strategy related and created with our government before. Uh, part of the literature review is related to how we develop and create in the types of living lab that we have. In Costa Rica, we have developed and transformer and active uh living labs and also the relationship that we have focusing is related to the public and private sector publishers, the evaluation of the process of these living labs and also the business model that we can create related by by the living labs and also the participation of the users and some characteristics and especially for the sustainability of these ones. For the research methodology, as I mentioned before, uh is I take the TOE model to uh analyze and even classify and also got have some qualities from the qualification to the barriers that I found through the literal review. Uh, for example, this is the model that I use. So in the first step, we have all the technical issue that I have found. And for the second stage, we can see all the organizational issue related to the living labs. And also for the next one is all the information that I collect related to the regulations and also for the barriers and cultural barriers that we have related to the living labs. Uh, for the model, even I put some other variables related to the type of living lab that we have created. And also how this, all these barriers are affecting all the implementation of the living labs through this old, through the, through this process. This is part of the hypothesis that I have that I present before. And they are related, like I explained in the previous model, they are related to the collaboration and also uh related to the creation of the and implementation of the living labs and how of the actors are uh working inside the living labs. I'm sorry. Okay, for the analysis result, in my country, they we have, this is the general information, is related to the type of living lab, how many we have related uh from the living lab that we have created and also the analysis that we have implement, how many people they are attending right now. So if you can see of the results, most of the living labs are attending few people. That's mean that we have uh a small living labs created in different sectors. And also, the number of receiving uh who are receiving the 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 services of the living labs is a little bit few because of the same product. is a little bit few because of the same, because of the same problem, because the living labs are very small and they are not too much incomes to attend to much population in our country. And also, the type of collaboration that we have, most of them is related to the private and public sector, and the minimum is related to the private sector. For the final result, I have found that many of our experts were agree that the most important for develop a innovation in Costa Rica, yes, can be through the living labs. So they were agree. Also, they are agree that it's very need to create new policies to support the living labs to create and increase the innovation. And the sec, the third one is related to the promotion of these ones, because one of the problems also that I'm facing in the barriers is related to the promotion of this one. Many people doesn't know that the living labs are existing in our country and they can be useful for create innovation and also to create startups. And also, we have the implication related to the prototypes that they are creating inside the living labs. Why the prototypes? Because if we have one living lab, we need to create innovation, products and services inside the living lab. So this, these prototypes usually are just in the previous step, just inside the living lab, but they are not using outside to get it, to give into the citizens. And this is the most important ones. Why? Because many of the experts are agree, they need more incomes to increase the innovation. Also, the country is need and is very necessary to support and increase the develop of the innovation of Costa Rica. They are very agree with that. And the benefit that you can generate the living labs can be very important, because we can implement many knowledge and also create innovation through the living labs. And also, we can obtain the necessary resource for the implementation of the living labs. This is the biggest one issue that we have, is the incomes related to creation of the living labs. Some of the implications that I have found is more related to the creation of new policies through the, to, to creating new policies related to the living labs to increase the innovation of that in Costa Rica. So yes, and also, the second one implication is related to the patents, because we have to change many things of the law, the actual law, related to the increase the patent process. And for my finally suggestion is the creation, of course, of the new policy related to the living labs and also for to support, to support them to, to increase the innovation. And also, the second suggestion is that in other countries around the world have been already facing these barriers. So they have knowledge and can be shared with Costa Rica to increase and also to mitigate these barriers. So this is part of my, my considerations and my suggestion for my, in my research. And the limitation that I faced was the, because we don't have so much living labs. So this was a limit, limitation, because even we, even we have some experts, it's not too much compared with other countries around the world. And the second one was related to that change our government. In that process was a little bit difficult to contact some experts really, because they were in that middle of the change of government. So it was a little bit difficult to attend with them. And this is part of my reference. And thank you very much.
Such wonderful presentations, full of insights, ideas and trends topics that give us idea about our global transformation. Now, I would like to invite one more time everybody to join me in a round of applause for our presenters. Now, we will have special remarks. So it is a great pleasure and honor for me to invite Professor Jajun Long, founder of Global IT Technology Program, I T T P at K I S. Let give him a big round of applause.
Oh, online, okay. Yeah, good to see you. We used to see at least four or five times a year before the COVID nineteen. And after the COVID nineteen, it's almost difficult to see one or two times a year. So would you please raise your hand, I T P P students? I don't recognize you, okay? Good, oh wow, so many, so many I T P P students. Okay, remember me, okay? Thank you. I will remember you, okay? All right, this is the G S D B, Green Development and Sustainable and Development Vision. That's what Professor Huang wants you have in this program, okay? And it's about the PhD research. I hear, I listen, it was good, most of them are pretty good. I know your difficulties in three years, what, three and a half years, you have to finish your PhD dissertations. But let's think about this. In the seventeenth century, when the Descartes, the French philosopher, declared that the, the world is like a very precise watch. So after his declaration, many people start to think the world is like some machines. If you want to understand the machine, you disassemble it, then you will know what it is this. So we call that as a reductionism. After fifty years later, Newton found out the very basic three principles about the world. It's completely fit into the Descartes' declarations. So reductionism is the dominating paradigms. In the nineteen, in the nineteen eleven, Frederick Taylor announces the Taylorism. It's also same standardization, everything should be same. According to Descartes and Newton and Taylor, we don't need to have this kind of issues, because all the other scholars in the developed countries, they already studied. But thanks to the internet, people understand that we are not created equal. We are different, different culture, different religions, different locations. So we need a different approaches, different models. We, we in this program, we want you to study and tell the other people, we are different. So we need different model, different approaches for your country, for the other world. That's what we are, we want you to the PhD students for your countries. And that's my first message to you. And the second message is like this. In nineteen, eighteen sixty-eight, Japan have a Meiji revolutions. So they decide that we are not, we don't want to belong to Asia. We want to be a member of Europe. So after the revolution, they observe a lot of scientific technological fact from the Europe. It was eighteen sixty-eight. Just one decade after, eighteen ninety-four, they defeat China in these territories. And they conquer part of China. And eleven years later, they beat Russian Navy in the East Sea, near Tokyo. And then nineteen forty-one, they attacked the United States of America. It was failure, but thanks to that accumulation of the knowledge in the industrial society, they could be a number one, not one, number two or three countries in the world for a long time. But they have a very long difficulties nowadays when they encounter the, when they enter the information society or digital societies. You come here to Korea, far away from your friends, your family, your son and daughters. Why you are here? You want to learn something from Korea. You can learn from Japan, you can learn from Korea, from the good things and also from the bad things. Korea was number one in the early two thousand and in the E E government. But we, we experienced the difficulties in M government. We are going, we want to jump to the platform, the government nowadays. I don't know, we can be successful or not, but that's the things. Don't try to just to follow the first movers. Find out what's the best way or what's the shortcut to your country. Since two thousand three, twenty years, I T T P was in the S N U. Seoul National University is a very conservative organizations. But nowadays, S N U recognize you, I T P P program. So you are the major player in the second campus in Shilin. It was an amazing thing. And I T T P, after sixteen years, you become a graduate school members. We were part of the programs. Now, think about this. World is changing. Many countries, even the developed countries, they are talking about new social contract, new rule, government, governing rules for the societies. Because world is changing. So think about your country in twenty years. Twenty years after today, what kind of country you want to be? You want to have, you want to make? It's up to you. And tell me, after twenty years, what you contributed to your country to make my country like this? If I survive? Thank you very much.